Call the meeting to order at 7:00 P.M. The sixteenth of May. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. And I'm going to make a motion to approve the agenda as written. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any additions or changes? Okay, all in favor?
Okay.
We've got two sets of minutes to look at. And I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting, May 2nd, as written. Can I get a second?
A second now.
Okay. Any changes or corrections?
I did not see any.
Sue?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of May 10th, as written, and...
Special meeting, right?
I'm sorry?
Special meeting?
Yes, special meeting. It says regular meeting.
Just change it to special.
Special. Any corrections or are okay to second on that?
Look, look fine.
Okay, need a second, I think.
Second then.
There, there we go. Now how do they look? All in favor?
Aye.
Correspondence. They've got a memo from the Board of Finance, from the chairman, Bill DiCicciarro. And on May 8th, 2018, the Board of Finance adopted a mill rate for 2018, 2019 of 29.66. And the budget, 2018-19 budget for East Haddam estimates that 4,150,595 will be received from the state of Connecticut for financial programs and grants. Without this, the 2018-2019 mill rate would be 34.42. So, making a good contribution on that. And I don't see Brad here, so I thought he might want to read his own. We have a letter from Brad Parker. And what he's writing is, Dear Board of Selectmen, I'm writing to ask the board to consider and appoint a charter study committee. I strongly believe that it is time for the town to consider its town charter. With our increasing population and the growing demands of local government, I think it's time for a new look. I'm not suggesting that everything should change in our local government. Charter can change a little or as much as our residents want. I also think this not being a local election year would be a good time to start the process. Thank you for consideration. Warm regards, Brad Parker. For what it's worth, there's 115 towns in Connecticut out of 169 that do have charters, and there are 54 that don't at this point. Charter gives you a great deal of control over things and allows you to design your town government largely as you would like. Something to give some thought to.
I agree with Brad that I think it's a good idea to revisit.
You can do as Salem did. I'm not sure if they're still the same way, where it's essentially exactly the same. And the only thing they changed was the terms for the Board of Selectmen. They increased the number and made it a four-year term, with the exception of the first selectman who had to run every two. Other than that, they followed the guidelines of the state. The difference being that you don't have to redo your ordinances and everything every time the state changes something. You can lock it in and keep it the way you want. And it varies on up to a town like Bradford, I think, which the three-man Board of Selectmen appoints every single office and every single position in the government. And, which means one party or the other is controlling everything all the time. So, everything in between is possible. Something to think about. We have an email from Randy Dill. It says, Member of the Board of Selectmen, relevant to recent discussions at the Board of Selectmen meeting concerning the transfer station, possible changes in the operation of that facility, including new fees. I'm forwarding the attached photos of tree stumps dumped adjacent to my private property along Olmsted Road. Dumping took place on Saturday, May 6th. This property is owned by the Dill family. I have since learned that the transfer station staff, that a individual arrived at the transfer station on the same day intending to deposit the stumps there. Person was told the transfer station cannot accept stumps, was rightly turned away. Apparently, this person then deposited the stumps on the above referenced property. Defending individual is believed to live in the south end of Beebe Road and is well-known to the transfer station staff. My purpose in sending this note and photos to illustrate the mindset of some residents who will dispose of trash, stumps any way they can, whether it's because they are turned away from the transfer station, as this one was, or whether they refuse to pay fees they find unacceptable. In this case, even the stumps, even if the stumps have been accepted as brush at $140 a ton, it's currently $100 a ton, by the way. For disposal, the three tree stumps likely weighed more than a ton and would have been dumped on the side of the road to avoid that fee. Bottom line, offender in this case should be prosecuted. Case should be publicized in the local paper. I don't know that we have the authority for that. And I hope that this incident lends itself to further discussion about the pitfalls and unintended consequences from a rush for more revenue.
I think he was just using the example of $140 a ton because we're looking at increasing it to $140 a ton from $100.
That, that was recommended by the transfer committee, yes.
Right.
I don't know the worth of that mine. But in any case, this individual that did this has been identified, has been turned over to the police, and they're dealing with it. So, we'll see where it goes from there. Okay, first selectmen's report. We've got a shared service report, looking at facilities in the town of East Haddam. We spent a great deal of effort getting ourselves ready for summer, for spring, preparing ball fields, cleaning up from the various storm damages, getting the grass cut, anything squared away. The beach has been worked on. Greens are being prepared. Town maintenance staff has been helping the Board of Ed. It's always nice to have. Board of Ed's been down as person, and assistance is very helpful. All of our equipment has been serviced for the season, sidewalks cleaned up. We had our budget vote, and the budget passed. We have a .08 mill increase, eight one-hundredths of a mill. And that's what we're working with today. The state has finished up their session, and some of the monies have been restored, not all of them, so we're doing better than we might have hoped for. We're looking at our audit coming up. End-of-year audit. And we've been reviewing and updating technology throughout the town. And I can tell you, the IT people have been working very hard and doing a wonderful job for us. Any questions on any of that, or?
Yes. How was the beach raked, cleaned, and prepared? Is it done by hand, or do we have a machine come in and do it?
Which?
This is on the town of East Haddam, first item. Local contractor opened the water at the town beach, and the town beach was raked, cleaned, and prepared for the upcoming summer season.
To be honest, I don't know.
Because there are some companies in the area, there were, that, you know, have a way to clean the sand and everything down to about six inches.
Yeah, mechanical rakes that they can use on it. I'm not sure just how that was done. I don't think anyone here would have any insight into that. I check and ask.
If they do do something mechanical, or they do have somebody that does that, or has been contracted to do it, it might be worth doing a couple times during the season, too.
Makes it a lot easier, that's for sure.
Cigarette butts picked up and stuff like that.
Will the takeout stuff that fine?
Yep, some will.
Done properly. That's nice. We've got our Board of Assessment Appeals Report here, and Eddie, can you comment on that?
We had three public hearings. We heard 40 appeals. We had 40 appeals this time. We had a busy session in that we had revow at this point. We reduced the assessments on 58 percent of the appeals that came before us, so that was 23 out of the 40. By statute, an application has to be made by the 20th of February, whether in person or by mail. And by statute, we're supposed to be finished by the end of March, unless we apply for an extension. We were on hold to be finished by the end of March, and then we received six letters that had been mailed on February 17th, but didn't make it to hear the town hall until March 26th, which is at the post office, that long to get the applications here.
Hmm, that because of the move?
It was the U.S. Mail and the forwarding from East Haddam. They know you've strapped it to a turtle, so it's faster. So, we applied for an extension, as you know, and we finished our work at the end of April. Of the appeals that we heard, we removed, we spent 127 hours, and we removed $409,000 from the grant list. The biggest increases that we saw with this revow were on multifamily residents and Cape Cod-style homes, both of which went up in an average of 13 to 22 percent. Grant list increased by just a little over 2 percent for the entire.
Very interesting. Any questions, Rob?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Responses to any previous meeting questions, there are only two that seem to be relevant. Carrie Dickinson stated she felt the consistent use of the scale of the transfer station could be implemented immediately. We are using that, and I've talked to Beth about that, and we're trying to use it more intensely, make sure that people aren't getting up there. And Mr. Gelson said he feels public work needs to be developed, a well-thought-out site traffic plan for the transfer station. I've discussed that with Beth, and she's working on that project right now, trying to come up with a better system and flow for the traffic, and especially the scale and the sticker management programs. And they are supposed to be watching those stickers, and there is a sticker program in effect right now, and we're supposed to be monitoring that more closely. There's an inclination to say, oh, I know these people, and it's okay, but we're looking for stickers. As said, do we have any citizens' concerns? Randy?
At a previous selectmen's meeting, I mentioned that the Beebe Road was being widened, for maintenance by Public Works. I was confirmed yesterday, May 4th, to the members of Public Works Forum and Road Forming out there, they were taking measurements. And we discovered that it is in violation, seen for ordinance, and is being widened. And the understanding is that the forming is going to take steps through proper reading to bring it back for control. Something, just like we should.
How do you get it back where it belongs?
Well, to the extent that that's possible, I suppose. Spread, spread out to sides of roads. So, you have to have confidence that they're...
Okay.
How much has it been widened, Randy, do you know?
Well, a put or two in some places.
Both sides, or just one side, or total?
It's hard to say. I know in some cases, it's been spread into entrances to, to cuts, the difficulty in some fields. So, we have to...
Thank you. Any other? Todd?
Yes, I have. The video and sound system, I can't tell that, there's a loudspeaker, like, no, I just, I can hear your voice. Okay, now that sounds like...
Maybe I need to bring that overload.
I can hear the microphone, but I can't hear your voice.
There's something I can't hear.
I can hear your voice, but not as, as if, I can hear your natural voice, not as loud as you can hear.
Hmm.
That's the first question. The second question is, is there a video system so this can be shown on YouTube?
I think it's operating. I see a blue light up there.
Okay, so how can, how can we access that? Is that, you're going to put it up there every, every next day, or we have to look for it? How does that work?
I personally don't know. The IT people are handling that.
Okay. Well, I don't either, so that's... All right, those are all my questions.
Okay. Do you know?
Comment on Randy Dill's question about Beebe Road being widened. Since that falls on planning and zoning, since we covered the ordinances, you know, for scenic roads. I followed up after I got, received a letter from him in the mail, which was distributed to the rest of the commission. And when I called Public Works and talked to Beth, she said that they hadn't even done anything out there. Well, now he's telling me that it was done and it's widened, so...
I...
I would appreciate, you know, I mean, why am I being lied to if it was done? And I'm being told that it wasn't.
I don't know if it was wittfully widened, perhaps, in the grading.
She told me that nothing had been done out there.
Meaning nothing, that they hadn't measured it yet?
Well, they hadn't even gone out there and graded it. And Randy's telling me that it has been done.
Well, it gets graded. It's constantly being graded, but, I don't know, I'm curious.
I know that's...
I think maybe...
I'm just hearing about this now. You know, when I called her on it, which I'm supposed to, it's my job, called her under my commission. She's saying that nothing had been done out there. Well, now, obviously, things have been done out there. People have gone out and measured it. It was widened, so why am I being fed misinformation?
Randy, when, do you know, when did they go out there? Because I will tell you, I also called, and I was told it wasn't widened.
Well, I was told the same thing one day, and because it was going to come up again, people went out and measured it again, discovered that it was being widened. So, I think, so we're getting a lot of misinformation.
We're talking substantial widening for the full length, or here and there, or what are we talking?
It's pretty wide.
Unpaid portion.
Mm-hmm.
It's wider every year.
Yeah.
How can I do my job if I'm not getting the correct information?
Yeah. I have no knowledge on any of this, so I can't really help you. I can ask her about it. What's going on? Any other questions?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Does that selectmen's office know any needs for more playing fields in this town? Is there a need for, I mean, we have a lot of fields all over the place. Are we looking for more fields for kids to play on? I know the population is going down at this point.
You'd have to talk to Park and Rec on that to find out, because they really handle that end of it.
Okay.
And I don't know what her needs are.
So, what, so we'll follow up on it, and...
Yep.
I know there's not a lot of money in the budget these days, you know, for extra money at this time, so I'm just kind of wondering, I hear rumors that, you know, people are looking for grants to, for fields and stuff. I mean, I don't know why this is going on, when, you know, the town doesn't have a lot of extra money at this time. I mean, what the town really needs is a track, opposed to more fields at this point.
I, we'll ask her about it.
Okay.
And you're speaking in terms of baseball fields, or?
Just fields in general, I'm not quite sure.
I agree on the track.
Because you're at Little League, high school.
They have to do it.
You've got Little League, you've got high school, you've got middle school, so there's a number of people, not just Park and Rec.
I mean, we can ask Board of Ed what they're doing, and just look into it, see if people are looking for more fields. I'm not aware of any active search.
Maybe I can help with that. We had plans come before weapons last night, again, for fields up here. The property was acquired by a town from the...
From the Brownell company?
From the Brownell family, for the drainage and two of the fields up there.
That, that's been an ongoing project planned for years now.
Right now, which I think the price tag is $750,000. It's back, it's back to the year.
So, who's going, who went to Wetlands? I'm just curious.
I'm sorry?
Who went there? Who presented that?
It was presented by Jim Luntcher.
Town. Part of it's the drainage coming off of this property, and having to address some of the issues there, but the fields are an additional part of it.
I, I'm supposed to know what he does day-to-day, and I have no idea that he's been working on this.
I, I will ask tomorrow, find out what's going on.
I mean, that's, you know, tax dollars being spent that I'm not aware of. This is the first idea of it, so...
I know there's been substantial plans that have been put off and put off.
Correct.
This building.
Correct.
And I don't know if that's simply them coming to the forefront now, now that the building's complete, or what.
Well, I guess that goes back to my first question, is, is there a demand for fields at this time?
And, once again, we'll have to ask on that. I just, what we're looking at.
You know, I mean, you've got $750,000 that would help students right now that are in school.
Mm-hmm.
Athletes.
Todd?
This is a very good point, very good discussion. I think this is a good time to start. I agree with Curry, that we should be very careful with spending our money on it. And I've been to, attending Board of Ed meetings the past two years, not all the meetings, there's a lot to be attended, but each, each year, I heard a request from both the students and the faculty of this school system, that we have a track in town. And I didn't know that we did build, did provision for a track at the new high, at the high school. It's soccer field in the middle, but there's grading and drainage around the prairie soccer field for a track. We just ran short of money, the track is expensive, but it is not $750,000. But we ran short of money, that's why the track isn't there. But it's ready to be done, and I don't think it's going to cost, I can't tell you what it's going to cost. It's, it's a shot, it would cost $50,000 to do that. But there's a lot of people in town that would like, and I, my discussion with people, a lot of people in town would like to use a track for exercise. It's safer than the road. And with other towns, their tracks are used as much by the adults in the town as the students and athletes. So, I think this is a good time to make a decision, what do you want to spend the money? I'm applying for a grant for a brand-new athletic facility down here, which is baseball fields. Maybe it's soccer field, baseball field. Maybe we should spend the money, get the same grant, use the same grant to install a track in the town, which will help our, our high school out, and help out the town in general as well, rather than another baseball field and a soccer field. Another thing you've got to be real careful about is, these fields need to be maintained very well. Otherwise, you're going to have broken ankles, broken legs, and it's not going to be a good idea. So, the more athletic fields you build, the more maintenance costs you're going to have. But I think, for now, we should spend the money on installing the track, rather than any other athletic field at all in town. We should spend the money first.
Town. It happens at the high school, that's Board of Ed, that's got nothing to do with us.
Well, okay.
And if it happens down here, we may be involved.
Can you apply for a grant?
I'm sorry?
Well, Mr. Luntcher's applying for a grant, wasn't he?
I don't recall.
I thought he was. He didn't mention, well, anyway, I may be wrong.
Capital is, is not Board of Ed.
I probably come out of capital, you're right.
But, but it is all taxpayer money, right?
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Barry?
Yes. Petticoat Lane is scheduled to be repaved this year, if I'm not mistaken. Is that still on track?
Yes.
Is the town going to make any provisions for speeding that is now going to increase? People fly down that road doing 60 miles an hour plus at this time. I come to the selectmen's off, I'm at the Board of Selectmen many years, and nothing has ever been done. They say speed bump can't be put in. I live at the end of one of the park, at the end of the straightaway, or at the beginning, when they come off 82, doing 60 to 70 miles an hour, and it has only gotten worse. So, I would hope the town, at this point, if they're going to be doing it, would make some kind of position to slow them down.
Well, I...
And I know it's an ongoing problem for our whole town, but you're redoing the road. Maybe we could do something.
We'll talk to Beth about that. Hey, anything else? All right. Unfinished business. Going back into the horizontal curve safety project, which everybody loves so much. What we did do, since the last selectmen's meeting, those two signs that were behind the trees have been removed, and there's been adjustments made to the other signs that were an issue for the people living there, the three driveways. Those have been adjusted. We've had no feedback from the state. That may be coming, or it may not. We'll see. We are making judicious adjustments. We are not going to go through wholesale, as Killinger did, in lime, and have the state coming back at us. Where people have a problem, where they raise an issue, we're going to see what we can do to make it better.
You mean old lime, because lime did not...
Old lime, I'm sorry.
Right. Question, the vertical, highly reflective sign that was put on delineators...
You're speaking on the post.
Correct. Now, that was an option. Could those be removed?
I haven't asked that question. State seems to be very jealous of what they've done, and...
Or embarrassed, I don't know which.
And they're, to my mind, the very brightness and the reflectivity of that poses a threat. And I'd like to see them removed myself. I could not, I couldn't understand it when they started going on stop signs, and I don't like them on the curved signs. And we may start adjusting that, too, where we feel it's too bright. So, if we hear issues, if people raise issues, we can start doing something about it. As I say, I'm not going to go out there and do it wholesale.
So, one of the things I don't understand is that some corners on some roads have signage on them, the chevrons and, and the curve sign. And then you can go a quarter mile down the road, and there's another corner that on a, that is not marked, and on another road, it would be marked. So, there's just all this inconsistency. And I think of Mott Lane, you have them on the 90-degree corner. Okay, that makes sense. And actually, it's a 90-degree corner, and there's a sign that says it's a 90-degree corner. You go down the road a half mile, and there's a left-hand curve, which on another road is identical, the curves are, by my eye, are identical, and then it reverses the other way. And neither of those two curves are marked, and this is just prior to Colchester Turnpike. And right there, somebody hit a tree on the far side. So, where is the liability that we're all concerned about? Is the state liable because they didn't put signs there where that car hit the tree, or a vehicle hit the tree, I don't know what it was, because you can see the evidence is on the tree? I mean, I'm thoroughly confused about the whole process at this point.
But I think they sent, they sent a list with their...
They did, they did.
What?
What they felt should be done. Again, I don't know how Petticoat was left off the list, because that has probably more 90-degree curves on it than any road in town, but, so, I mean...
I was not around during the design phase, so I really can't speak to that, and anything I might say would be speculative. And I would agree with you. When you see two signs behind trees, as it were, on Honey Bull, Honey Hill, and when they were being installed, the... And when they were being installed, the neighbors came out and said, what on earth are you doing? And the guy said, we put them where we, where they're marked. Simple as that, we don't speculate on whether they're good, bad, or indifferent. Where the markings are, we put them. The sense I get, and this is purely a sense, is that somebody in an office somewhere, looking at the curvature of the road, with no idea where the trees are, just established locations for signs. And without seeing where they were going or what the rationale was for them or not. And beyond that, I have no, no idea.
Well, the prints were pretty specific because they showed driveway entrances and everything, so. But you're, you're right that there's, and, and we've said this a number of times, that this is, that does not make sense.
There's an awful lot of common sense lacking in it. And I, I can't even begin to guess as to why. Okay. Questions were raised about the transfer and unfinished business. We have the review board, as I was calling it, and I've got a different name for it now, the Control of Animals Ordinance, the Trailer Ordinance. I just wanted to kind of run down through as to where we stand right now on each and every one of those items, as far as I could identify them. First and foremost, for about an awful lot of what we're looking to do, we need a citation hearing procedure and process. That's why I call the review board, and I'm giving it a new name. The ordinance for that was written by Randy Dill, it has already been forwarded to our attorney. He's looking at it, Rich Roberts. And he's offered the insight that he's done this for other towns. And it can be a little bit sensitive, a little bit difficult. His quote is, citation ordinances can be useful, they can also be very complicated. We've done several of them for our clients. I'll look at these and the trailer ordinance and get back to you. So he's reviewing that at this point. Along with that, we're going to have to create a process. We're going to have to staff it in some fashion. We're going to have to create the citations, the tickets. We're going to have to create notices. If someone's delinquent, we have to give them a notice, and there's going to be a number of things that have to be noticed in the process. We're going to have to somehow record and manage those records. We're going to have to have collection, deposit of fines. We're going to have to come up with a process for that, where do they go, how are they used? And then how do we deal with delinquent payments? We are supposed to be in a position where we can place liens on people. We need to look into what we can integrate with existing systems. So we're reviewing that now, while Rich is looking at the ordinance. And the ordinance is fundamental to a lot of the other things we're doing. The trailer ordinance, that's been pretty much written. We're satisfied with what we see, it might be a little bit tweaking for it. But we need the citation hearing procedure, item number one, which I'll call that from now on. In place before we can actually do anything with that. We can certainly get the ordinance passed, but it's not going to be functional until we have that, that hearing process. And speaking with Ian today, he said there are a great many things that they do, where the fines go to the state, that they could go to the town. And I says, sometimes they're a little hesitant to go ahead with this, so, because the attitude is, well, why should, why should we give it to the governor? If the town were getting it, I think they might be more inclined to write citations and give us the money. But the trailer ordinance, it has to be reviewed by a lawyer, it'll go to public hearing and to a town meeting. We're looking at changes to our ordinance number two seventy-nine. That's our solid waste ordinance that we currently have. And Randy has come up with amendments to that for sections two, three, five, and six. Those are all pretty well-written, they're all nicely in place. Randy is very, very thorough in terms of what he did. It looks good. Once again, it needs, number one, the citation process in place. And then it has to be reviewed by a lawyer, public hearing and town meeting. Control of animals is in the same situation. That was written by the Animal Control Officer, the Agricultural Committee, they both reviewed it. Once again, we need the citation hearing procedure in place. And then review by a lawyer, go to public hearing and a town meeting. Hauling our own waste from the transfer station. This is already built into next year's budget. Our current staff at the transfer station has CDLs, they can do that. And their contract is currently in negotiation, and we need to address the new responsibilities, how are we going to handle those? That's going to be part of the negotiations with them. Limiting access to the upper level. And that's checking all vehicles for what they're carrying. Then weigh in and out as appropriate, if you're carrying metals, if you're carrying cardboard or paper. There's no charge for that. Other things have a charge. Access is probably going to have to be reconfigured so we don't wind up the traffic jams. That could be pretty messy. And I've talked with Beth Lunt, our Director of the Public Works. And she's evaluating the traffic patterns and looking at that, trying to figure out just how we can design that so it's going to work. No sticker, no access. And traffic flow and checking procedures are being developed to do that. Maybe an automotive, you know, an automated system. There's gates, and we may be able to check for the sticker, put it on the passenger side. Have an eye that looks for it, and the gate opens to let you in. If we do that down the road a little bit, we can just flat-out eliminate anybody who hasn't got a sticker. And that's, I think eventually where we're going to wind up. For the moment, we have a sticker system in place. And we're looking to enforce that more strictly and have it watched more closely than I think it's been. A new sticker system, the town clerk, we've talked to her. And the idea is to create a sticker system where proof of residence and vehicle that's going to be used are required. And you get a sticker with a vehicle license tag on it. And this is probably going to take place after the dog registration period, sometime shortly after July first, we'll see how it works. One of the suggestions that came up was to close the back of the hopper to the public. Got people going back there with pickup trucks and just offloading. We haven't had anything happen there, which kind of surprises me, I've been back and I don't much care for the, the process. We did have a chap up in the back fall, break his back, and we ended up with a settlement out of that a number of years ago. I talked to Beth about it, she doesn't like it either, and I said, we can just flat-out close that, and that's been done. So people aren't going to be going to the back with pickup trucks and with their, you know, the public in general. It's going to be limited to the haulers with their heavier loads. And we've got to look at a bag system. And I, that's going to be something we're going to have to have a lot of discussions about and persuade the town that it's a good idea. And it has to be designed to increase our recycling. Once again, we're going to be reviewing it with a lawyer, probably a public hearing and a town meeting to try to get that in place. Bulky waste. One of the suggestions was to raise the cost. The suggestion was a hundred and forty dollars a ton, it's one hundred dollars a ton right now. That strikes me as being a little bit abrupt and excessive. And it would put us somewhat higher, I think, than anyone in the area. And that perhaps was one of the intentions of the recommendation, was to push people in another direction. I think that we can, as a board, raise the rate, and I think we probably should. My thought is to go to one twenty a ton and make it a little more expensive, generate a little more income for the town. That's something we can do in an immediate sense. And the end to it is education. We need signage up at the transfer station, big sign over the hopper that explains that anything that goes in there costs us seventy dollars a ton to get rid of it. And then this big sign over the recycling containers that says, you know what? We get five dollars a ton for everything that goes in here. Big difference there, seventy-five dollars a ton. And it's, from what I understand, about to go a whole lot higher. Everybody's talking about a substantial rate increase. We need mailings, we need to go with multimedia, we need to involve the schools. We have to make people truly understand the cost of recycles versus municipal solid waste, the seventy-five dollars difference. And, you know, a thousand tons, and we can easily do that for recycling, increase it by a thousand tons, is seventy-five thousand dollars. Well worth doing. And we've got to make it real clear why this is good free to add them. We've got a lot of work to do. And that's kind of where we stand right now in the whole thing. Any comments, questions?
So we've closed off the back to pickup trucks and whatever else.
Cars, pickup trucks. That wet slippery surface and a thirty-foot drop just scares the hell out of me all the time, every time I go back there. I could never understand why we allow people back there. I think Mark attempted to shut it down once, had a tremendous amount of feedback, a lot of complaints, and reopened it. Well, I closed it again.
Have you had any feedback negative?
Yeah. I'm waiting. We'll see what happens.
So is there any reason we can't start the education process immediately?
I think we need to, we need to make some signs, we need to start getting it out there.
I think it's really important, besides getting the signs up there, is that we get it out to the public and, and then the newspaper and flyers.
April did a great job with publishing his report and giving that information out, we need to build on that. So that's, that's something, and I'll be perfectly honest, I don't have a whole lot of time to generate that stuff. I'm going to need some help with it. If you have a little bit of time, I'd appreciate it. Anything you can do, anything anybody else wants to do, it'd be well appreciated.
Well, I think this would be a great thing for Ms. Lunt to do. I mean, that's, it's kind of her bailiwick, so she's got to be, I think, as much as anyone, from your perspective, she should be leading the charge on this and trying to get people doing this. One of the things is that, you know, at some point, you're going to have to start inspecting the recyclables, and that could start almost immediately to make sure. If people save five dollars here, oh, good, so I'll throw everything in here. But if you're contaminating it, then there's issues there and will end up costing us money, so.
Yeah, one of the big signs is the what's in, what's out.
But people just throw bags in and, and no one knows what's in them, so. We're going to have to get Sue to go up there and learn a little bit more about this particular operation.
Some idea.
But seriously, that is an issue, because people, you know, especially once the bags, if we go to the bags, which we almost have to go to the bag system. I believe. People will be, I suspect, just like the individual that wanted to dump the stumps out there on, on the road, will be trying to.
When it costs you money to go into the hopper and it's free to go into the recyclables, that's going to be an issue.
Yep, so I think you're going to have to plant on somebody inspecting it, and people aren't going to be happy about that, but I think they'll get used to it fairly quickly.
Keep a closer eye on them.
I think other people, people also need to understand that if this is successful without the, the, the refuse collection companies in operation, then it will be moving to smaller hoppers, much like the recyclables, and that they'll be able to be used for people to put their trash in there. And people won't have to be lifting them up over the gate and everything, it'll be much simpler.
Kind of what goes on down at Essex.
Correct.
Got a great little system. But you know what, they get a whole lot less material. And that's where we need to be aiming. Sue?
So I, I was going to say, we need to implement what we can immediately so people start getting in, plan, yep.
Part, that's part of the reason for this list. Looking at it saying, what should we do right now?
The other thing I've, the other thing I've noticed, and I mentioned on my notes here on this, is that you have a lot of, or a number of people going up to the back and removing the aluminum and copper and whatever else goes into the metal bins and then trucking it home.
This is climbing down into them.
Climbing down potato hooks, whatever, to retrieve whatever they feel is valuable. And then it's probably not so much of an issue if they're going into the bulk, bulky waste, construction debris. I don't know why anybody does it, but, you know, that would save us money. But it's costing us money if they're taking metals and aluminum.
I've thrown people out as often as I can when I see that. And short of having someone stationed up there to watch every single minute, I don't know how we do that.
Well, it is, it is an issue.
It's unacceptable, and.
I think if the staff feels comfortable knowing that they'll be supported, if they kick, start to kick people out.
I, I'd be that clear.
Much more.
I'd be that clear.
Okay.
And I've done my own kicking out. You just go up there and you can't believe if somebody's down there with a broken glass and everything, and you say, what on earth are you doing?
Yeah, I think we have considerable liability if we don't address it.
We can't have that.
I sent all my comments.
Okay. That kind of covers A through E, or B through E, all in one shot.
So all of these are at the attorney then, is what you're saying?
I'm sorry?
Mostly, I think you said, are at the attorney. The ordinances, the animal, the.
They're all actively working on them. Trying to get them moved forward.
They're being reviewed by the attorney though, at this point.
These are being, are about to be reviewed, they're complete. Okay. And.
You just got the new animal one tonight, so that had not gone yet.
The animal one, the last version of that.
I just gave you that tonight.
And one of the problems with that was it got all tied up with the, how you, how you actually do the review board and how you do the finding. And all there's going to be is just a little bulletin there, a standard one on all our ordinances. It says, go back to the.
Citation.
Citation hearing procedure. And that'll tell you how it's done. Here's the fines, this is what we can charge. And the process is defined in the ordinance for the citation hearing procedure. So that it's standard for everybody, for everything. We don't need to have each and every ordinance trying to come up with its own hearing boards.
So, you said this one we have back, so this one has been reviewed.
This is the one that we just got.
By the attorney, so this has been, no.
No.
Okay.
He has it.
Just got it from the person that revised it.
Okay, I got it.
Tonight, and I need to send it to the attorney.
Going to the attorney.
So then, once it's done, the attorney, you're going to give them back to us?
Come back to us, give us his opinion, says here's where this works, here's what somebody else says it might work even better. And there's a little bit of a process here, we don't want it to take long.
Right.
We want to get it done.
Correct.
Okay, moving forward. Paper, too much of it. Rob, you were at the Board of Finance last night. And they dealt with the crisis of strategic communication plans. Can you kind of brief us on that and tell us what happened there?
So. I'm, I read this.
Yeah.
Why is this coming from the Board of Finance?
They were, they were looking at it.
Well, but, but crisis and strategic planning for public relations isn't Board of Finance. So I'm not understanding why this is coming from them to us. And so did we get quote, I mean, this is a letter saying, oh, we're going to enter into this contract and we're going to pay twenty-eight thousand dollars for services and. I'm just a little bit.
Fourteen thousand for.
Well, fourteen thousand for these two plans, seventy-five hundred for crisis commu, oh, oh, I see, added together, so fourteen thousand. So, so.
This is a company that I became familiar with last fall.
So did we do an RFP for it, who's been talking to them, I mean?
We've been, this has been on the radar since last fall.
Who's radar, because it's never been brought up to us.
Mine. And it's been sitting on my desk, we finally passed a budget, it looks like we can do it, and.
Oh, this is in the budget?
No. Well, we got the budget nailed down and it's resolved, and I said we can start moving forward and thinking about this. That's why it's here, so we can start moving forward with it. They're amenable to it and they're willing to finance it, is what they've indicated.
So you've already gone to Board of Finance before you actually presented it to us?
They initiated that, they've been aware of it as well. And I would have held off and not had them move until we talked.
So they've known about. So, they've known about it, why wasn't it in the budget?
From what I understand, it's, they have a contingency fund that they're planning on using this, because there's a hundred and fifty thousand that was also set aside by the schools in the contingency for potential spokesperson and hiring additional law enforcement people, because remember that came out at the last minute from the Board of Ed.
Well, that wasn't set aside, that was not approved in the budget, and they said we'd figure out a security plan.
It's a correct set aside, right.
Here we go.
So...
This is, what this is all about is to try to deal with what they were looking for. So, this is intended to be in part to deal with that set aside that was done.
But that wasn't really set aside. They pulled it out of the budget.
Yeah.
And said, we're going to come up with a plan.
Yeah.
So, now they're just going to start doing these things and pulling this out of con... Is it contingency? So, or they're going to start pulling it out of what, fund balance? Our operating account? They're just going to...
I wasn't there, I'm not sure where they...
I'm sorry, and I didn't take a note on that particular thing, but, because I wasn't really clear how or where the money was going to be funded from.
Oh, so you, you weren't at the meeting?
Was not at the meeting.
I had another meeting I had to be at.
Oh, okay.
And that's why I asked you to...
There'll be more discussion on it. I could tell you a little bit more about what it's all about. I wasn't sure, I mean, Chairman brought forth, you know, that Emmett and he had spoken, and you've talked to these people, correct, Emmett?
Yeah.
Actually, I tell you...
Who's met with them?
I, they did a presentation last fall at CCM.
Right, I saw them then.
Yeah, and excellent presentation. They wrote me afterwards, and then they've come back with this plan, which actually dated March nineteenth.
So, who did they present it to?
It's addressed to me.
Did they come in and present a plan?
It's simply a letter at this point, a proposal, and with the budget behind us now, it's time to start looking at it and thinking about it.
Okay, so, so what happened at the Board of Finance? Did they approve spending fourteen thousand dollars on this?
They're, well, they haven't, no one's spending anything yet, because this has not been approved by anybody. But what, my question is, what is this doing for us?
Right.
And...
Must be a plan behind this, this is just a letter.
Basically, because there's been issues, I guess, in past, when there's been other things going on in town, and I go back to where they had the SWAT team or whatever it was up at the school, and people didn't have any idea what was going on, and Facebook lit up like a Christmas tree. So, but establishing or improving on our communications, who does what? What happens if the number-one person who's supposed to be responding isn't available? Who's number-two? Basically, a very careful and clear SOP as to what happens on these things. Very, there's no questions, there shouldn't be any questions if something comes up, whether it's, as was used as an example at the Board of Finance, whether there's a rabid dog has walked into the school, to the bridge isn't open, or it's closed, or no traffic can go over the bridge for an hour, a day, or a week, or whatever. There's going to be, we're going to need a lot more input from Board of Education for moving it forward, see what they're looking at. It was emphasized that it needs to cover more than just the schools, and primarily to improve the communication between the public and all the town personnel, so that they know what happens, know when it happens, why it's happening, what's going on, what's being done to...
So, they did a presentation to, I get what they do, because I was at this presentation at CCM.
They actually run tabletops.
Yeah, I understand that. So, you've been speaking to them? Have they come in to do a presentat...? I'm asking...
They've not been in yet.
So, they just...
Depending on what we do here, I can invite them to come in and talk to us, let us know.
What we do here, are we looking to do something right now, or we're just presenting?
This is just informational, I'm worried here.
Okay, I guess I'm just concerned as to how it came from Board of Finance to us, and why it isn't going from us and Board of Ed to Board of Finance for approval of the...
I didn't understand that either, so...
It's something Bill and I have talked about from time to time.
So, so no one has come in to do a presentation?
Nothing, no presentation. I've looked at it, said it's a very interesting idea. Maybe we need to do this, particularly with the school, what they had proposed for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and this may well be a good alternative to it, and give them what they need and give us what we need.
Well, we should just look at different companies.
And, you know, we would probably, this is a fourteen thousand dollar proposition, we can't look at just one company.
Right.
We needed a couple of them, and so that's also in the works right now. I, I...
I just didn't understand how it went from Board of Finance to us.
I was a little startled that they had moved forward as quickly as that.
Who's "they"?
The Board of Finance.
Well, how did they get this? It came to you.
They, they've seen it. As I say, I've been talking to Bill about this, and so he's aware of it, and I'm going, whoa, let us, let us get rolling on this first.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Ross Switman, Emmett, I can probably add some clarification to this discussion. First of all, this started back during the budget season, budget hearings with the part of the school shooting. So, the Board of Ed wanted to, us to appropriate a hundred and fifty thousand, what one, Board of Finance...
Yeah, I, I under...
This is the first step. We asked that, no, we're not going to appropriate a hundred and fifty thousand, because you don't have a plan. And what you're going to do, worth it. So, Emmett went to Bill, and how to explain to us, the Board of Finance, which was passed Monday, is that this is the first step on a plan to, to security...
So, I guess, what, what was passed?
We passed, I think I'm the one actually making the motion, we passed a motion, appropriate fourteen thousand dollars, acquired this firm.
Well, you can't.
And the next step was to go back to you folks for your approval, because that was a request from the, from the...
That's not the way it goes.
What was the funding source, and where was the money coming from?
Fund balance.
Fund balance.
The same source of a hundred and fifty thousand, once the Board of Ed comes back to their plan. See, there's three phases to a crisis, let me explain them. First phase is everybody's happy, everything's calm and warm. Second phase is when something happens, like a rabid dog in the gymnasium, a cafeteria, or a shooter. The third phase is when things are settled down and the danger is gone, the town needs to know what's going on.
Correct.
Parents. And this is where the third phase, for a single communicator or communication body that says the same clear message, that's what this is all about.
I, I understand that. I guess I'm just trying to figure out where the money's coming from, who approved it, and where the quotes are, because it's fourteen thousand dollars, right? We have to go through a process. So, I'm, I'm just confused, because it's the first time ever I'm seeing it, and it's already gone to Board of Finance, and it hasn't come here.
The monies are available.
From contingency or from...
Fund balance.
Fund balance.
Believe us, a fund balance.
But until we move forward, they're not going to be used, or not going to be actually in place.
Does it come from contingency?
Yeah, I'm wrong.
I'm checking right now, but I'm pretty sure they wanted to spend their contingency money that they had that they haven't touched yet.
That's what I thought, so...
But there's money, bond money, there's money available.
I know there's a lot of money, because they shouldn't have ninety thousand dollars in contingency, but that's a whole other story, so, it shouldn't be. It, it doesn't, but I'm, what I'm saying is, can they spend, is it their purview to spend the, like, we have to, I think, get quotes on it. I'm not understanding the process. That's what I'm trying, forget about where the money comes, where's the process?
No, 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 we're not saying...
It's not going anywhere until we...
Well, you said you approved spending fourteen thousand dollars.
But, but the understanding is going back to you folks for your approval. We're not doing it unilaterally.
It's simply making us aware that the money's available.
Oh, so now we have to get quotes? That's what you're saying? Okay.
Now, we can move forward and start working with it.
So, they provided a funding source, and we can move forward from there?
They assured us that we would have funding if, if we go forward with this. And now we have to determine whether or not we wish to go forward with it.
We have to get quotes.
Yeah.
You have to donate...
No, we're here...
No, you don't.
No, just, just get a two quote. Well, fifteen thousand, that's right.
Fourteen thousand requires two quotes.
Right.
Moving on, tax collector fee discussion. And I'm going to make a motion to appro, to approve the proposed fees for the tax collector's office for payment history reprint, five dollars, tax bill reprint for a dollar, become effective July first, two thousand and eighteen. Can I get a second on that?
I'm sorry, so, what, where, are you talking about these fees?
Yep.
And they're all going up, I would imagine, right?
No, it's just the two, the five dollars and the one dollars. The other ones are already in place, and these are proposed fees. We have the ability to approve them, and I'm going to let Denise in a moment tell us all about it.
So, I'll second it.
There we go. Now then, Denise, could you explain what's going on here?
The Board of Finance Subcommittee, can you, I believe, was created, and they emailed every department wanting to know if we could be increased, and if we could generate more revenue. So, I did contacted a couple of tax collectors, see what they had for fee schedules, and these are two that I thought would be useful. Yes, it's another fee, we'll have to pay, but it's also information they can get online for free, so they can get it and not have to pay. But it is a way, I must have had fifty people come in and have it figured out for their income tax this year. So, times five bucks, you're a little bit of money. So, that's where I came up with these, and you have the authority to set the fee, I don't.
Yeah, other towns are charging these fees already, and no issue with it. And many, many others that we don't.
But these I feel comfortable with, because you can get it for free.
And at least the history reprint, you're actually doing some effort to bring numbers together. You're creating the document.
I'm going online to the same website they would go on to.
Yep, and piecing it together and giving it to them.
Yes.
Is the information available to them, to anyone that wants to go online and reprint it? Is it easily found?
Yeah.
It's easily determined?
Around the town's website.
Okay. Never had to do that.
I'm going to teach you.
I only asked once. And you said it's within our purview to approve these, correct?
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. April is traditionally Volunteer of the Month for students, and we have a nomination here. I'm going to read it, and it's, Dear Mr. Lyman, Nathan Hale Ray High School is pleased to nominate Nicole Riget and Catherine Ryan as candidates for the two thousand and eighteen Volunteers of the Month. While many of our students donate their time and energies to worthy causes, Nicole and Kate have shown extraordinary commitment to organizations that they care deeply about. Each has found a way to channel their individual passions to make positive contributions to the community. Nicole Riget is focused, responsible, and driven. She applies her tireless work ethic to everything she takes on. Nicole's dream is to work in early childhood education. She has prepared herself for this pursuit by seeking out opportunities to work with children in the educational setting. From very early in her education, Nicole has volunteered as a teaching assistant in both elementary and middle schools, and has accumulated over four hundred and fifty hours of volunteer service. Nicole's duties varied over time, from organizing and preparing supplies, to eventually working with small groups of students, assisting them with lessons. She has worked with students of all abilities and found her work immensely gratifying. Parents and teachers have remarked on Nicole's patience and maturity. These experiences have solidified Nicole's decision to pursue teaching as a career. Kate Ryan does nothing in half measures, and this includes volunteering. She has made it a personal goal to perform one thousand hours of community service before graduation from high school. As of this date, we have documented over seven hundred and seventy hours towards that goal. An avid skier, Kate has volunteered with the National Ski Patrol. In her role, Kate is, was required to participate in rigorous training. When accidents occurred, first aid and transported injured skiers down the mountain, or Kate would take charge of the incident, directing her team through the response, she routinely provided first aid and transported injured skiers down the mountain. This past winter, Kate had the opportunity to expand her volunteerism by working with the Skiers Unlimited program. Skiers Unlimited works with Connecticut Children Medical Center to teach disabled children how to ski. Kate found her work with these children rewarding, and she saw them grow into independence and self-esteem. Nicole and Kate represent the best of Nathan Hale High School and East Haddon. They have learned the importance of service through the example of a caring and committed community. Sincerely, Laura Corbett and Mary Little Finne, Haga. Uh, school, sorry?
They forgot the N, Finnegan.
What did I forget?
They forgot the N, it's Finnegan.
Finnegan.
N, Finnegan, they forgot the N.
Oh, Finnegan, that makes more sense, there we go. School counselors, I'm going to make a motion to name Nicole Riget and Kate Ryan as Volunteers of the Month for April two thousand and eighteen. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving forward, we have no board or commission changes. Tax refunds, I'm going to make a motion to award tax refunds in the amounts as presented, forty-five dollars and thirteen cents to Michael Newell, one hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-one cents to Financial Services, seventy-two dollars and forty-seven cents to Kemp's M. Thames. Can I get a second on that?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Public comment again. You got Denise?
We're always hearing people, complaints, comments about the personnel of the dumpster station, how things are run. I just wanted to say, I went up the other week with tires, and I know where they go, I know that the, so I just walked over, and my son was helping, we just unloaded the tires, and I was going to walk over and pay, and Keen, is it Keenan?
Mm-hmm.
Was there? Was very nice, came out, and was like, you know it's two dollars, yes, I know, but he was right there, got you a receipt, and just said, you know, he was right there, and I'm happy with things.
I've heard many good things about him.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yes. Bill?
First of all, I would second Denise's, you know, staff we have up here right now. I have a question about the transfer station. I was wondering, I'd like to take a look at the financial analysis done for the transport services in the admin house.
You mean for us to haul our own waste? Okay.
The reason, it just frankly struck me as a little odd that the industry trend over the last twenty years has been outsourcing. We're in-sourcing, we're going to save money, rate, and I would just like to be comfortable relative to these assumptions.
Whatever numbers we have, we'll get you. Randy?
Correct me if I'm wrong, did I hear you say that the people were putting up these signs, the curb signs, John finished their work?
Yes and no. They're coming back and inspecting and continuing to monitor what's going on, so... So in terms of the actual erection of signs, yes. Uh, in terms of being there and monitoring them, no.
Just, just for your information, so that you know, the box truck on BB Road with a crew is putting up more signs.
There's yellow signs.
The other day, not the Chevrons, they were putting, actually adding speed limit signs to.
Okay, that's not part of this program, that's something else entirely.
Okay, I just wanted you to know.
If it's BB Road, that's the town?
That's a town road, I, what, the state is there with it? Contractor?
I don't know who they're working for, but they were putting up these signs on BB Road on existing curb signs.
On, on this sign that has the curve on it, the post with the curve on it. I think that was part of the, the original, if you look at some of the diagrams, I think they did include speed limit signs on them, so.
I haven't heard anything about that, I was told they were finished with the program.
Cause I know a number of the signs now have speed limits with them, the curb signs.
That's interesting.
Apparently they went around and saw that maybe we didn't have enough signs, so they thought they'd add to them.
Maybe they had a few extra and they're just looking for a place to put them.
Anyway. Okay?
Uh, would be possible to expand a little on the trailer ordinance? I, I wasn't around for any discussion on that, what does that involve?
Nineteen seventy-five, I think, was the original ordinance.
Seventy-nine was the last updated one.
Basically, it, it limited trailers, camper trailers.
Okay.
And that's all they're talking about.
Okay.
On that, for that purpose. And they were eight feet wide and twenty-six feet long, which is, there's nothing eight feet wide and twenty-six feet long except antiques now. And it's become completely outdated in terms of what's in the town. To quote Jimmy, he said, if we enforce that, we'd have three hundred people that had to remove their trailers from the town. So we have to get realistic about what it looks like today and what's there. It also seemingly limited it to having one camper trailer parked in your yard in storage. The individual that was the cause of all this wound up with two parked there, both of which were larger than that. And it became an issue last fall. Planning Zone took a look at it, if I remember correctly, Cary, and the decision was, let's hold off, we're gonna get the ordinances in place, and then we're gonna update that ordinance. And that's what we're in the process of doing, updating that ordinance.
Twenty trailers, all new trailers.
Yeah, this is strictly camper camper trailers. Todd?
Yeah, so I, I have several questions and several comments. First, first one is a question, controlled animals, what does the ordinance consider to be animals? Dogs, cats, horses, pigs?
Livestock.
Chickens?
All livestock of any sort.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, as I said before, uh, probably an opportunity there to solve a problem that can't do revenue. If there's repeat offenders as far as loose dogs, cost of town, it's very clear explained to me by the animal drop, so it costs the town a little bit of time, a little money. So the owner, maybe the first offense may not have hit a fine, and there is a fine, I can tell you. The second offense, though, the third offense, they should be able to pay up and compensate the town for the trouble that they've caused.
You're somewhat echoing what I've heard from him myself.
Yes, I think there's an opportunity there, for sure. Now, the change in subjects, the transfer station, yes, I agree, the back access to the hopper has been dangerous for a long time. In fact, I was even putting back up there my pickup, there's no way to stop my pickup going, I mean, there's no barriers, nothing. Looking at that deep hole, my goodness. But I have a different approach to that back, back access. I think it should be made safe and usable, I'll tell you why. Today, if you go up there, the transfer station is a pretty popular place on Saturdays. And it gets pretty crowded, it gets backed up, people are waiting to dump their garbage, and including myself. But we have to walk, I have to carry my garbage cans across the driveway from the far side, and then everybody can park up close to the hopper, right? And, and some guys come in at the last minute, they're in a hurry, and you have to be careful, you gotta look, it's like, we have pedestrians jaywalking North City, you gotta be careful of traffic. That's, that's a danger, as, as a place gets more used, more crowded, it's getting more of a danger. Whereas if we're also able to go on the back, dump it back, that will double your, your throwaway, call your throwaway capacity. But I agree, have to make it safe. But I think that's to look at some way to make it safe and usable, so that we don't have pedestrians crossing, moving traffic, carrying a garbage bag, your garbage cans. Uh, I think that's an opportunity for improvement as well as minimize liabilities. Don't throw away that back, hopper, I'm telling you, don't throw, don't throw away the back access yet, make it safe. As far as the Chevron signs, we, we've talked about that for quite a few times now. And I think it's a serious problem. But I firmly believe it is a traffic hazard. Someday, somebody's gonna make a mistake, it's just a matter of time.
You're speaking of the bright signs?
Yes, the bright signs, the Chevrons. And I think we should join other towns and have a common voice to stay. I can't believe that any sane traffic engineer would endorse such a design, just can't believe it. So I don't know who came up with this, but as, as Rob clearly pointed out, and you yourself have it, it's very hit or miss in town, it's not consistent. So I think we should get ready for a fight, because if we don't, we'll end up with a liability. And I'll explain. Somebody goes off the road, for whatever reason, in that area, that corner is not marked, that's signed, it could be one of the reasons why he went off the road. We're gonna have to put all these signs in every corner. I think we gotta draw the line now, where something happens. Don't want anybody to get hurt, but we gotta draw the line now, because we have inconsistency, public control, we got a big problem, we gotta be consistent with the public. The lawyers find that by that week, all will pass. And I don't, we need to be there, go there. So I think we should wanna do something, maybe we wanna take the leadership role of the town, pull our towns together, get this fixed. That's what I suggest. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Selectmen's discussion. There were a number of concerns about this building the last time around, the last Board of Selectmen's meeting. And the Municipal Office Building Committee was ready and equipped, people referred to them, take their issues, show them directly. Cause they're responsible for the building, for the pavement out there, for the sidewalks, the parking areas. And we had any number of people there available, just in case, we got absolutely no response. And just so it's real clear, if you have an issue with the parking or the handicap areas or any of this, they're the guys to talk to. And they are ready there and, and willing to talk to you about it. We don't have control over them yet. So, Eddie, any comment on that, or? I think they were a little disappointed, they rather expected to have some people with issues show up and be able to resolve them, and it didn't happen.
When was this on the computer, when was this?
The last Municipal Office Building Committee meeting, they meet every other week, on Thursday. Uh, is it twice a month? Yeah, twice a month on Thursday.
But they did address the issues that were raised, correct? At this meeting?
Yeah. Okay, uh, we have a Memorial Day Parade, May twenty-eighth, ten AM. Uh, eight-thirty at the bridge, where we're gonna go out on the bridge and throw a wreath in to the river, dedicated to our sailors. And fire some salutes there and then come back and have our parade. And we're gonna schedule a nice sunny, beautiful day for it this year. I think we've been rained out twice now in a row. So we're gonna work on that one. And that's all I have, Rob?
Uh, actually, I've got a few things. Mr. Blasch, maybe you're gonna address this, one of the questions that came up was the ADA parking area spots out there. And I, I bring this up because this was also brought up at the Board of Finance meeting on Monday. Uh, a question as to who was gonna pay for it if there's any changes that needed to be made. But no one came to see you on, okay. I saw they were surveying it when I went by the other day, any issues that you were?
Yes, there are issues there. The slopes are correct on the drawings, but pavement that exists there is not correct. Changes from, I believe, two point seven to three point eight minutes. paving contractor has been notified and it will have to be impressed. And appreciate it being brought to our attention, appreciated it been brought to the attention of the committee first.
Well, at the Board of Finance meeting, I suggested that if people had issues that they bring it to the board, to your group first, so. Jay, you had a question about trailers. I think if we're gonna have a trailer ordinance, it should be all-inclusive, which is why I put some comments on that particular thing there.
All-inclusive?
For trailers, I mean, whether it's campers, horse trailers, whatever, if it's, if it's a trailer, and they're all considered camp trailers.
Other, other trailer ordinances that we have.
The ordinance that exists actually encompasses a lot more than just camp.
Well, it's not clear in it, because people have trailers for lawn mowing equipment. And they have trailers that are covered trailers, and they have horse trailers that you can live in, that are big enough for the horse and you to live in, that have.
That, that might be an issue, I, I'd, I'd have to read it again.
But what I'm saying is that I don't think it's clear in that it should be all-inclusive, if, if it's a trailer, it should be in there, whether it's. In general, all trailers that could be.
Should be under this, not, it should, it's just a trailer ordinance, not a camper.
Correct, that's my point, thank you.
That's your point.
Well, I, it is, it goes beyond that, cause I know it has residential fixed trailers.
But it, it's primarily talking about camp trailers and things like that, and I think it needs to be clarified as to everything that's involved, so. Okay. Ferry brought up speed humps, and I think I brought that up several years ago. Speed humps are being used in other towns, they're not speed bumps. They are speed humps, they typically are designed to limit traffic to a certain number of miles per hour. And it, what it is, an elevation change, that vehicles can go up and over, and if you're going thirty miles an hour, you won't have a problem. If you're going fifty miles an hour, you'll know that you hit a speed hump. And there, you could plow over them, they're designed for this type of, um, environment, where we have four seasons typically. And I think it's someplace, something we might wanna investigate for some of our roads in town, because it may reduce some of our traffic that are using our side roads as shortcuts. And they were never designed for that, so.
Not a bad idea, I believe I discussed that years ago, I'm not sure if it was with Beth or her predecessor, and didn't get much of a response, maybe you can approach her and talk to her and see what happens.
I was kind of, years ago, well, I know many states use them, I don't know if there's any specific.
I see them in other towns.
Yeah?
Just like here.
Yep, so.
And, uh, they do seem to work, they certainly slow me down.
So going back to our signs, our, seems to be our perennial or continual subject, Chevron's in the corner signs and everything. So all towns, from what I understand, in at least this district, were, were given the opportunity to have these signs.
Yes, they were.
Okay. Some of the towns looked at the proposal and said, thanks, but really, really no thanks. What are, is the liability for those towns for not taking these signs?
I cannot even begin to address that.
So I, I understand, and it's a rhetorical question, but I think, follow up on Todd's comments, that I think some of this needs to be answered, because, um, I mean, our plan of conservation development basically says, you know, our rural roads shall remain as nice rural roads. Say that five times, and, uh, these have moved away from that significantly. I'm not gonna reiterate it, but again, there's the inconsistency from town to town, within towns, um, what's allowed. And some towns don't have the reflective strips on them, the vertical pieces on the sign, on the post, so, um, just something I think that it needs to be addressed, and in Todd's question, to have a consortium of towns go together, I think is, is, uh, is a very good idea. And if I remember correctly, you brought that up two meetings ago?
Several times, I think so.
Okay. I won't take credit for it.
No, I'll take credit for it, I'd be glad it gets fixed.
So, uh, and then the, the last thing is, and, and I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to this, and, um, trees. Between, I figure we have somewhere between a hundred and two hundred trees that are owned by the town of East Haddon, that are dead or dying, that are gonna have to be removed this year, this next fiscal year. I do not know where that money was reflected in the budget, I'm sorry.
Is tree removal in public works?
But I didn't see it listed, but I could have missed it, so.
What, about five hundred dollars a tree to remove?
Uh, a minimum.
Probably small though, like, I wanna say it's probably around five thousand dollars, that's what it used to be.
Yeah, I, it's a small amount of money, and with the number of oaks I've seen that are dead adjacent to the road, Emerald Ash Bore killing the ashes, and the usual sugar maples and everything that are dying, um, this is gonna be a substantial bill for the town. And, um, whether we're paving Petticoat Lane or whatever, I'm just thinking that we may wanna look at, in light of this amount of money that is gonna have to be spent to make our road safe, and especially with two people dying in the storm yesterday where they're in cars. We have a number of dead trees or dying trees that are very obvious, and somewhat, quite a bit of liability, I suspect. So more liability in for the silly signs. So, um, I think this needs to be reviewed and, uh, as to how we're going to address it, if there's monies to address it, and if we need to reallocate some of the money that's, funds that have been expended, or, excuse me, not expended, that have been allocated for, uh, maintenance of our roads.
I hope you're not a hundred percent right, but I think you're probably pretty close. The Emerald Ash situation is a real mixed thing. One of the things they're saying is, you know, you're gonna have to remove them eventually if they do die, but don't be too hasty, because we need to identify the ones that are resistant.
Great, absolutely great.
And so it's kind of a mixed thing, you're looking at them going, uh, you don't wanna go full bore on the ash trees.
Well, the problem is, of course, is that if they're right next to the road, and, uh, you don't really have a choice there, so.
What I have discovered is you can identify the ones that are in trouble very easily, because of what the woodpeckers are doing to the bark.
Dripping the bark, so it looks different color.
All of a sudden, they got this squatchy look to them, light and dark, and you go, oh boy, there's another one, and no, no choice.
Not all of them are that way, and, and some of them just die, and you got the small, I think they're green ashes that were planted in front of Dutch, that the town paid for several years ago. Have they been removed?
Are those all white ash?
Uh, they're either white or green ash that.
Cause I read that the green ash doesn't get affected by this.
I think all ashes do, so, but anyway, those are just full, whatever they are, whether they're green ash or another ash, they're, they're all, if they're not dead, they will be, they're just totally infested with them.
Your, your calendar this year, page eleven?
Martha? We have an update in the, the next year's calendar too, so.
Okay, cause that was a terrific article on it, and I learned a lot just from her, and I'd been out researching it, and she had a lot more in there.
Yep. We can forward you the latest.
I agree very much.
I'm trying to stay ahead of that.
Cause I recognize it as a problem, a pending big problem for us, and just how we're gonna handle it, I don't know.
The problem is, is that the roots often die even before the plant does, I mean, the, the total tree, and then you're looking at a situation where the tree's there, and then suddenly it just goes and it's, it's, uh, it's annoying. If it's annoying if it's on your land, it's, it could be dangerous on the road.
What do we, why, I had asked for the Revitalization Committee update to be added to the agenda?
Sorry, I don't have that. And I.
So what's the status of the RFP for the environmental testing?
We are down to one company, they're reworking some of their stuff to come up to what we need, and I think we're gonna be awarding that shortly.
And someone had asked me, um, they, they had talked to you. And someone had asked me, um, they, they had talked to you or something about, um, what was going out in Aspen, RFQ, Quest for Qualifications, right, to be a developer? Are we putting some, they said you had told them a month and a half ago that that was getting put together? Is that still getting put together?
We need the RFP first, we need to know what we've got there first, and then, yes.
Okay, so, so when is the RFP for the environmental gonna, when, when are we gonna, so, we're down to one company then? We're down to, we picked someone?
We, we have not made a decision, but we have a, a preferred company, and we're looking to make sure that they're giving us the specifications we want, that it's gonna be adequate.
Okay, and so when is that decision getting made?
Have we got a scheduled, uh, meeting with them yet?
No, nobody's giving me that, they're negotiating with the low bidder. And providing what they want doesn't come in higher than the second bidder, they can negotiate with the low bidder. And they have one more meeting that they think will make it through, and I have not gotten a date for when that's going to happen. Ron Turner is the chairman of that selection committee.
Yeah, and I'm looking for that just as you. I would, that needs to be done.
About to see. Uh, can we add that, can we make note to add an update for Revitalization Committee? I was surprised, you know, you sent us the charter, and I was surprised at how much that committee is supposed to be responsible for. I'm not sure that's happening, and if things are being run through them, again, like I said, I don't want them wasting their time. They're volunteers and, and if this should be under their purview, then we need to put it under their purview. It'll help with our time in making the process move a little bit faster.
One last thing, and Ed, maybe you can address this, if I might. Can we quiet down this, this circulating fan, this, that's here?
I was noticing that tonight. I'll bring it to you.
Because it's really quite loud. I, I, I believe you're absolutely right, but it is, uh, distracting if nothing else. Thank you.
You too. It gets in the way. Okay, uh, all that said, anything else? Okay, I'm gonna make a motion at eight and thirty-four.
Second.
And, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There we go. Thank you.